Thank you. I will reconvene in open session, the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education meeting for Thursday, November 4th, 2021. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Schumash, Tongva, Fernandino, Tataviam, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. I would like to remind everyone present to please make sure they are wearing a mask and that their mask completely covers their nose and mouth. I believe everyone has it. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Michelle Hurst to please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clark, can you please call the roll?
Member Aga Khanian, Member Weisberg, Clerk Ferguson.
Present.
Vice President Tabit.
Present.
And President Frittner.
Present. Thank you. Reporting out on closed session, closed session items 3A through 3D were for discussion only with no action taken. Adjustments to the agenda, do we have any adjustments to the agenda for tonight from board or staff? Seeing none, so thank you. We'll move on to seven items for future agendas. Do anyone have items for future agendas? Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you. President Frittner, if we could get just updates on a few fronts. One, I know Vice President Tabit has been working on the street racing initiative with the police department and police chief, so just circling back on that, doing an update on efforts there. If we could get a report back on that, or at least just an update. An update from the fundraising committee, I know they've been working for a while on bylaws, and so I just want to see where that's at in terms of the innovation process, things like that, that has been kind of asked traditionally of the fundraising committee and just seeing where it's going. And then the last thing is time sensitive, and so just asking if we could potentially send a letter, or at least the board president be able to send a letter on redistricting. As members of the public may know, should know, every 10 years, we go through a census and reapportionment and lines are drawn. Currently, the state redistricting commission has drawn the city of Burbank into a district with San Lintahunga, Sun Valley, and the city of San Fernando. These are great communities, and there's a perfectly capable Assemblywoman who currently represents these areas. Having said that, as a school district, it puts us alone as a unified school district of a suburban community with the rest of the communities who are served by LAUSD. And so when there are going to be legislative bills that have conflict between suburban school districts and urban school districts, unfortunately, we will be drawn into a district where two-thirds of it will be LAUSD. So for those, this is important. I think we should be drawn in with like communities, the five-star district, the five-star district communities we work with so well, and we share similar issues when it comes to educational experiences. So just asking that we send a letter before, the next board meeting is too late to send a letter, but if the board president would send a letter expressing interest in staying with our five-star colleagues to the commission on some level.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, and I think we can work on that. I think it is something, the redistricting is something we've, that's been noted, especially as you mentioned, the Assembly District is most impactful at the moment, so can work on that and the other items as well. I know fundraising, the fundraising committee hasn't been able to meet, but will be next week, so we should be able to have a update from that shortly. Any other items for future agendas? Not seeing any, so we'll move forward to item eight, reports from the board, and we will start with our student representatives. So first up tonight is Jewel Reader from Burrows.
Sorry. Okay. Hello, everybody. I hope you're all doing well. To begin my report, I just wanted to talk about ASB hosted our first fall pep rally on Friday, October 29th, to prepare the school for the homecoming football game. We had participants from all grade levels take part in games such as tug-of-war and a water balloon toss. We also recognized all the fall sports by highlighting their individual seasons and having them walk out as a team for the student body to cheer them on. We also took the time to recognize the hard work that our clubs have put in on campus. Additionally, we had the homecoming football game against Burbank High, where our football team came out victorious. We are excited for the team to move on to CIF playoffs against Torrance tomorrow. We are providing our students with a fan bus, where we are transporting 50 of our students to the game tomorrow to cheer on our football team. Link Crew hosted the freshman tailgate event on Thursday, October 28th, in preparation for the frosh soft football game against Burbank. Link Crew had games, music, food, and much more for the freshmen to enjoy. And Link Crew also hosted a virtual costume contest where freshmen were able to show off their Halloween costumes. Upcoming Link Crew is hosting a Friendsgiving, where Link Crew is offering activities at lunch on November 18th for freshmen to enjoy alongside Link Crew leaders. Link Crew is always excited to find new ways to recognize the freshmen and keep fostering a positive relationship between upper and lowerclassmen at our school. The EDI Committee had their first meeting at lunch on October 28th, where they discussed their purpose and goals for the year. The EDI Committee always has super important ideas and discussions that are always brought to ASB that really help ASB understand how we can serve a purpose for everyone on our campus. The JBHS Dance Team is hosting Hip-Hop Explosion today, November 4th, and tomorrow, November 5th. It is always a pleasure having our dance team perform, as the dance program is such an important part of our school. The college pre-mentors have been hosting workshops for senior students during the academic excellence period, such as a session to help peers with the Cal State application and the University of California application. They have also been hosting Saturday workshops with the counselors, where parents can seek help and get guidance from the college pre-mentors or counselors on FAFSA. The mentors have been working hard to meet with every single senior before November 30th to discuss post-high school plans and options. ASB was introduced to the part-time finance clerk, Ms. White, that is coming from Burbank High to support us with financially needs a couple times a week. We are excited to open our student store back up on November 9th and 10th to sell our AP exams. Next, the school has been moving forward with school-wide Chromebook distribution, as all ninth and 10th grade students have been given the opportunity to check out their own Chromebook for the school year. We are also having our food, Fall Food Festival on November 19th during Lunch in the Quad. This is an event where we give clubs and groups the opportunity to fundraise by working alongside different vendors such as Jamba Juice and Yogurtland. Our students have many food options to choose from and support a club slash organization at our school simultaneously. Some things that ASB is looking forward to coming up include our holiday food drive, our ASB Adopt a Family with Burbank Coordinating Council, and our new holiday door decorating contest. Thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Thank you.
Saying none. Thank you so much, Ms. Reader. And next up will be Ishushana Turpatrosian from Burbank High.
Good evening, Board President Frittner, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, and senior staff. Last week was our Spirit Week, which ASB was so happy to see so much participation in the dress-up days and lunchtime activities. One of the Spirit Days was on Friday, where students got to wear their Halloween costumes, and there was a costume contest at lunch. And that same day, we had our first rally of the school year, which was held outside on our field for the first time ever, and it went really well. Our rallies are a great opportunity to come together and raise spirit while honoring our sports of the season and preparing for big games, in this case, the homecoming football game. Our spirit commissioners held various activities for classes, and each fall sport had their moment to shine. Our rallies are optional, and students can attend during our rally schedule, which extends our nutrition break. The football homecoming game was on the same Friday, where Burbank didn't take the win this year, but the game was a great opportunity for us to come together as a school and support our football team. There was a great amount of spirit at this game, and the bleachers were full. During the games, Jewel and I exchanged our gifts from our ASBs alongside with our principals from our school. For our arts department, our instrumental music association represents Jazz Band Swing Night, where there will be dinner, music, and dancing available on Friday, November 12th at 6:30 in our quad. Come out to have some fun to support our music department. Our Advanced Dance and Unleashed teams are holding a dance show called Emergence, from November 18th to the 20th at the Wolfson Auditorium at 7:00 PM. These dancers are amazing, and I highly encourage everyone to come to the show to see their talent. Our girls' soccer team is having a clothing drive for gently-used clothes on November 7th, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 PM near the corner of Glen Oaks and Harvard in the teachers' parking lot, as a fundraiser for new uniforms, equipment, and et cetera. So check your closet for items that you can part with and donate it for a good cause. For sports news, in golf, Lizette Oriana tied fourth lowest score with Kiara Hernandez sixth lowest score. Both qualified for next week's state qualifier matches at Brookside. We are thrilled of these athletes' success and can't wait to see what they continue to accomplish. Our boys' water polo team are Pacific Division Champions, and we are so proud of them. They also played against Cathedral today at 5:00 PM for their second round of CIF, where they got to celebrate the seniors on their team during their senior night. And news just got in that they won their water polo game, so congratulations, boys. Thank you. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions or comments? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Turpatrosian. And just in the nick of time, Mr. Isaiah Chichil from Monterey High School. It's always good to make a dramatic entrance when you can.
I apologize for being late. There's a lot of traffic.
Not a problem.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to tease.
Good evening, Board President Frittner, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, senior staff, and audience. My name is Isaiah Chichil. I'm here to represent Monterey High School. Monterey has just started their second quarter, and we've done a lot with ASB within this last week. Last week was our first Spirit Week at ASB, for ASB, I'm so sorry. We're excited to, you know, start doing all this stuff for Spirit Week. We sold bouquets for Halloween, and throughout the entire week, we had different days. We had a Jersey Day, we had Twin Day, we had Anything But a Backpack, and then for Friday, we had Come in Your Costumes. And during nutrition, we were doing musical chairs, and a lot of students came out and they decided to participate. We have also started our speech and debate classes, and we started our Photoshop class. And I'm in all those classes, and I can honestly say that they're amazing classes, and it helps us connect with our students much, much better. We are hoping to build more classes and programs to help students who need more help in other areas other than math, English, history, and all that. We're also happy to report that for quarter one, we ended very strong. The average student earned about 25 credits, and this is the highest credit average in Monterey history, where most students earned a full 30 credits throughout the entire quarter. The admin team continues to work on working with Burbank High and Burrows to transfer more students over to Monterey that need credit recovery programs or a small school with more support. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Great. Thank you for your report.
Again, so sorry for being late.
No apology necessary. Glad you got here. We will move on to item nine, Request to Address the Board. An individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within its jurisdiction by completing a blue request card. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker. Except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education, the superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. We will start off, my first card is Lori Little and Michelle Hurst. They will be followed
Hello. President Frittner, board members, Dr. Hill and staff, thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. For anybody that doesn't know, my name is Lori Little, and I'm the current Burbank Council PTA president, and I'd like to introduce Michelle Hurst. She is the current First District PTA parliamentarian, but many of you may also know her as a longtime Burbank parent, a past Disney PTA president, and a past Burbank Council PTA president. First District PTA provides support and leadership to more than 270 schools from Burbank to Pomona, and every October, they hold an administrators and superintendents conference. This is a wonderful event that brings together PTA leaders, superintendents, and principals to highlight how PTA and the schools are true partners in doing great things for kids. Like so many other things lately, adjustments have had to be made, and this year, the conference is being postponed to February 28th. While Michelle and I are here to deliver this invitation to Dr. Hill, we also needed to take a picture with all of you, which you were kind enough to do prior to the meeting, because this is not an interactive thing. I lost my word. Moment. Thank you. First District is launching a Better Together social media campaign through November to show their gratitude to our administrators and for the opportunity to work together positively impacting the lives of all the children and families. And they were asking all the councils and units to reach out to their superintendents and administrators to take these pictures. And being Burbank, we couldn't just take a picture with Dr. Hill. We wanted the whole board, so thank you all for taking the picture with us prior to the meeting. And as First District states so beautifully, individually, we are pieces of a puzzle. Together, we are the whole puzzle, the whole picture, and we are better together. And we just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that we're very lucky in Burbank, that our PTA relationship is not just strong with our superintendent, but with our school board as well. So that being said, I know it's not interactive, but I wanted to give Dr. Hill the Better Together sign, along with his invitation to the superintendents' conference in February.
And some swag.
And some swag. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Polly Stenberg, to be followed by Dory Foster.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Polly Stenberg, and I am a parent, a BUSD parent. I have two small children at Providencia Elementary, and I'm a future Burrows parent, if everything goes according to plan. So thank you for your update about Burrows. I've been doing a lot of learning about Burrows in the last little bit here, which I'm going to speak about tonight. Good evening to all the members of the board, Superintendent, Dr. Hill, all of our administrators, classified staff, teachers, parents, caregivers, and extended family who make up our community. Thank you so much to those of you who attended our Destiny Education Project launch event. We are incredibly motivated to continue our work together in our school district. I would like to use this forum this evening to address the John Burrows Associated Student Body, ASB, the ASB Executive Council, the JBHS School Site Council, and the JBHS High School Mascot Committee. Thank you, thank you, thank you to every individual in each of these groups for the work you have put in towards changing the Burrows mascot, for preparing and executing a plan to determine a new mascot, and working on an action plan for implementation of the new mascot. I have come to understand that this work has taken place over the course of many years, required the effort and dedication of many, and is finally approaching an exciting reveal date of December 6th for the new mascot logo. All of your work is so critical to cultivating a school culture and community that embodies our district anti-racism statement. I understand that the full rollout of the mascot update will take time, money, and the ongoing participation of many people. I want to express firsthand to everyone involved in this process that the Destiny Education Project is committed to supporting all of the aforementioned groups, as well as Facilities Director Larry Cross and the entire facilities team, with resources and support for implementation. We will continue our fundraising efforts to support implementation at every level, including in a deepening of a shared understanding of why the mascot change must be understood through an anti-racist lens. With the roughly 36.3% of the JBHS student body who voted to keep the old mascot, there is an enormous opportunity to learn and grow together, as we all continue questioning the biases, negative stereotypes, and false narratives that have resulted from white supremacy culture. We must move together towards a shared understanding that racialized hate speech and racist imagery are in and of themselves a form of violence. Tonight, in respect of the adoption of Resolution 13 at the October 21 board meeting, in which John Paramo, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, recommend that we proclaim November 2021 as BUSD's National Native American Heritage Month, in which our board acknowledged as presented. Therefore, be it resolved that the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of November 2021 as National Native American Heritage Month, and urges all schools in the community to observe National Native American Heritage Month with appropriate programs and activities. In observance of this resolution, and in respect of all Indigenous communities, the Destiny Education Project is extending the immediate funds to implement a temporary cover to the Burrows' front signage as soon as possible during the month of November. The JBHS front signage is a highly visible and hostile reminder of a violent history that dispossessed Indigenous communities from their homelands and sacred sites, locally and across the country and continent. Across Burbank's school campuses this November, teachers are rigorously reevaluating curriculum and activities surrounding the Thanksgiving holiday, with an eye towards the upliftment of Indigenous perspective and culture. In that spirit, many school sites are inviting Indigenous elders and community members to speak and share at school assemblies and in classrooms about their culture, history, and relationship to the land. We acknowledge while we contemplate these actions, as President Frittner, you shared, that we are standing on land that was traditionally cared for by the Tongva, Gabriolino, San Fernandino, and Tataviam Indigenous communities. You also mentioned the Schumash. We honor Indigenous heritage, culture, and ancestors, and we are committed to the ongoing upliftment of Indigenous people in our greater Los Angeles community. These words and actions are offered with respect, grounded in authentic reflection, presence, and awareness. We commit to covering the JBHS front signage immediately, while we wait for the new official mascot logo and broader implementation plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dory Foster, to be followed by Carmenita Heligar.
Good evening, Dr. Hill, President Frittner, and all of the school board members and staff. My name is Dory Foster, and I'm here tonight representing the group Together We Can. We've had meetings already with Ms. Tabit, so thank you for your ongoing support, but I wanted to ensure that the entire board and our community is aware of who we are and what we're doing. This group was started by myself, Lisa Martinez, and Yolanda Wu, in response to the tragedy on August 3rd, when we lost Serene, Jaden, and Natalie. A week after that, that these innocent lives were taken, both my cars were totaled while parked in front of my house due to a reckless driver. Just this week, I've heard a child was hit by a car at drop-off at one of our middle schools. Thankfully, I hear the student is okay. Next time, that may not be the case. I could go on and on, as you know. Racing, speeding, and reckless driving, especially around our schools, has to stop. Our mission is to promote positive changes in Burbank by working together as one community, as well as to reinforce that everyone's life is precious, and all people on foot, bikes, or in cars deserve a safe environment to move about. We have been meeting with our city council, the Burbank Police Department and commissioners, our county officials, and in a couple of weeks, we have a meeting scheduled with our high school principals, ASB and PTSA, where we will discuss driver safety and education in our schools. This meeting specifically will focus on doing a week-long Safer Streets campaign that we can hopefully turn into an annual occurrence. We are also trying to bring back the Very Impactful Every 15 Minutes program. We've been informed that the district stopped doing this program because there were some that felt it was too traumatic, but isn't that the point? What would be more traumatic is what the family and friends of Serene, Jaden, and Natalie are living through. None of us here, I know, want that to happen to another family. We ask you to please reconsider this program, or be open to something as impactful, as we believe educating our students and our community will help get us closer to a safer environment on our city streets. We also ask you to support us in our mission and goals that we have for our schools. We are starting with the high schools, as I've already mentioned, since these are the students that are already driving or who will be driving very soon, but we plan to create programs for all of our schools, including at the middle and elementary levels. If you would like to keep up to date with our progress, or like more info on what we're doing, we can be emailed at TogetherWeCanBurbank@gmail.com. We'd be very happy to take you through everything in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmenita Heligar at the present time. I see one card coming in, but that will be the last card, so if there are any others who wish to speak, please get a blue card into Ms. Clark now. Thank you. Ms. Heligar.
Hello, esteemed board members, Dr. Hill, Ms. Casao. Today, I'm talking about a hard subject, an incident that happened to me and my husband today, and I wanted to give a quick history lesson. The Naturalization Act of 1790 was a citizen and naturalization law that only free white persons of good character could enter into America. That excluded Native Americans, indentured servants, slaves, free Black people, and later on Asians. The Immigration Act of 1924, or the Johnson Reed Act, including the Asian Exclusion Act, was enacted on May 26, 1924, and it was a United States federal law that prevented immigration from Asia and set quotas on the number of immigrants from the Eastern Hemisphere. Additionally, the formation of the U.S. Border Patrol was authorized in that same act. From my understanding, Armenia is located in Asia. I'm here to say that, I'm here to say today, that no one from Armenia would have been allowed to immigrate to America without our Black and Brown people marching allowed to immigrate to America without our Black and Brown people marching and dying so we can pass the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. At the height of the civil rights movement, the restrictive immigration laws were seen as an embarrassment, so President Lyndon B. Johnson signed the 1965 Act into law at the foot of the Statue of Liberty, ending preferences of white immigrants dating back to the 18th century. The law abolished the national origins formula, which has been the basis of U.S. immigration policies since the 1920s. The Act removed de facto discrimination against Southern and Eastern Europeans, Asians, as well as other Northwestern European ethnic groups, from our immigration policy. I have four children that I'm raising in our BUSD schools, and for years, I've heard stories of our Black and Brown students being attacked by their Armenian student counterparts. And they weren't helped by the administration at the schools. Today, I understand why. While shopping at the Sally's Store on San Fernando during lunchtime, I heard a girl scream. She was knocked down. My husband and I went over, and there were 10 Armenian children, some of them over six feet, trying to attack her and another little BIPOC student. My husband told them to stop, and I asked them, "Why are you attacked? Why is it taking 10 of you to attack the child that's maybe 100 pounds?" They didn't respond. My husband told them he needed to go on their way. They continued to threaten them as if we weren't standing there, and promised that they would get them. After the student was protected, she came over and really thanked my husband, because she said they never helped. I'm asking that Dr. Argakhanian, other members of the Armenian community, and also Dr. Hill and any other board members, to sit down and have a meeting to also understand that Armenian children are also part of the BIPOC minority community as well. We're in this together. They have to face discrimination, but for them, for years, to be known as the ones that are attacking our children and ganging up on them, something has to be done. So, that's what I'm asking for, a request that we all come together to bring our children together, and that they don't see themselves as separate from our BIPOC community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Danielle Vincent, and at the present time, that is, again, the last card I have. So, again, a reminder, if you would like to speak, please turn in a blue card. Thank you. Ms. Vincent.
Hi. Thank you for your time. I wasn't prepared, and my printer wasn't working. Okay. So, first, I'd like to talk a little bit about my daughter, Olivia, that is attending Burrows High School. She's a ninth grader. Prior to lockdown, my daughter, Olivia, was an AP student with pretty much As and Bs. Distance learning destroyed her. It just really, it was really, really hard for her. I was also going through chemo, radiation, and recovery during that time as well. So, watching me go through that while I was trying to teach her, you know, because she just didn't do well at all. So, basically, she would shut her computer and not do anything for the rest of the day, so I had to kind of step in and basically be her teacher. That was hard. I mean, there were times where she went to, so far as she would scratch her head until it bled. So, we implemented a 504, which was really great. Hallie Fleischman at Jordan made your prop. She's just like the most amazing counselor. So, cut to the second day of high school. Her health teacher shamed the unvaccinated, which we are an unvaccinated family, because my doctor doesn't even want me to get vaccinated, told them that she thought that if people that were unvaccinated went to the hospital, that they should not be allowed a bed. So, needless to say, this sent my daughter into kind of like zero respect for this teacher, because that meant to her, she didn't give a crap if our family lives or dies. So, very inappropriate comments from a health teacher that's supposed to be teaching mental health as well. So, cut to about six weeks into school. I received my weekly update with my daughter, because we were really trying to get her back on track. She's getting an F in health class, and I'm like, "Well, why is my daughter getting an F in health class?" So, I go in and I look at the percentages, and she's getting like a C in most of everything, except participation. She was getting an F. And I'm like, "Well, why? I don't even need these. Why is she getting an F?" And so, I emailed the teacher, and I said, "Why is my daughter getting an F?" And she said, "Well, she's not raising her hand in class." And I was like, "That's why you're giving her an F?" I said, "You know, six weeks into school, have you asked her why she's not raising her hand? Have you contacted me as to what else could be going on with her?" Not one call, not one email, nothing to me, nothing to Olivia. Right there in her profile shows that she has a 504, but she gave her the F. I don't know, she just didn't care. So, I was like, "No, that's not going to happen." I said, "Did you even bother to look or ask?" I asked her all these questions, and she said, and I kind of called her out. I said, "This is a lack of interpersonal relationship skills and teaching skills." I said, "Especially as a health teacher, that you're supposed to be helping our daughter and our children with their mental health issues, that everything they've gone through for the last 18 months. You know, adults aside, we're having a hard time, but these are children. It's our job to teach them, not put your personal feelings in there about how you feel about the vaccinated." So, next day, my daughter went from an F to having a C+ in class. Needless to say, I had to call her out. No one else is going to call out these people. It's our job as, our number-one job as parents is to advocate for our children, and that's what I'm here doing today. I'm advocating for my child, because no one else is going to take the time to figure out why my daughter's having headaches and dizziness every third period. She's missed 10 days of third, fourth, fifth, and sixth period since the beginning of school because of headaches, and they all stem from that class. She's going in with, already with anxiety already, hyperventilating in a mask, and so she's getting lightheaded. I mean, this is all documented. So, cut to last Friday, the 29th. She was in class. She had missed the 10 minutes prior, the day before, because she had went outside for an air break, because after, you know, all of the talking to the doctors, her doctors, health professionals, psych, we figured out she's hyperventilating, and she's just not getting enough air. So, they all decided that, "It's okay. Olivia can go outside and have an air break. Great." So, it actually has been working wonderfully. So, Friday, during health period, the assistant teacher, or instructional assistant, whatever her name is, which I still don't know her name, which is also very puzzling to me that I've asked this question many times and have not been given an answer, she came over to her desk, and she's like, "Olivia, you know this." And she's like, "No, I don't, I don't know what fluoride is." She's like, "I don't know." And she's like, "Come on, you know this. You know this. It's in our water. It's in our toothpaste. You know the answer to this. Come on! That's bullying. That's shaming my daughter in front of the class at her desk. Not okay." I have three seconds left, and I'm sorry, I'm not done. Can I have a little bit more time? Thank you. So, my daughter cried for the rest of the class, hidden, and then she went to the Wellness Center directly after, and she spoke to a counselor for the entirety of fourth period. And again, thank goodness for Burbank Family Services. We love them. They've helped our family through so much since we first moved here in 2017. So, needless to say, my daughter was bullied by a teacher, and the only person that's going to advocate for her is me. I'm her parent, and when it comes to these mandates, I'm advocating. You don't know my daughter. You don't know the struggles that she's been through. We, there's a couple danger, really dangerous ingredients in these vaccines that we don't know what's going to do to them. We don't know the long-term results. So, I am asking you to dig deep down in your moral compass and in your conscience to not decide for my child what's best for her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joel Slossman, to be followed by Virginia Rios.
Good evening, everybody. Before I forget, I just want to salute the group of people working to make our streets safer. Thank you so much. You have my support and my family's support. President Frittner, what is it that we all have that you can't take away, and we couldn't give away if we wanted to? The answer is, of course, you know, inalienable rights. So, what are some of these rights? And this goes for kids under 18, too, just because they're on your property. To act in self-defense, but that's up for debate with the superintendent. I think if the superintendent went to the front of Burrows High School and saw the names of those boys who died for self-defense, I think he might maybe give that some thought. Some other examples are the right to own private property, to work and to enjoy the fruits of one's labor, to move freely within the country or to another country, to worship or refrain from worshiping within a freely chosen religion, to be secure in one's home, to think freely, and hand-in-hand with thinking freely, to speak freely. To speak freely without fear of being yelled at by you, without your gavel being slammed down, without you saying, "Go ahead and sue me," without you saying, "Get out." People can come here, including me, and say things you disagree with. You know, you're going to be vaccinating some kids and some youngsters, and I feel vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinate. It's a good thing. But you're going to hear some people come and talk about and give their opinions, and you should be patient with those people, and you should listen. Couple meetings ago, a woman came here and read from the Bible. She asked for an extra minute, and you cut her off, and I thought that was disrespectful. You gave this other lady, and you've given me extra time in the past. I think you should apply these courtesies across the board. Just because somebody is saying something you don't agree with, or delivering it in a manner that you don't agree with, I think you should holster that gavel, have courtesy equally to everybody. Now, one of these things that I left off on this inalienable rights, they also call it unalienable rights, very important, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I think that if you talked about these things more than 30 minutes in a class once a year, I think that you would have a group of people that have less homophobia, less racist behavior, the pursuit of happiness, that individuals have this inalienable right to seek. So, give that some thought, please, and I thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Virginia Rios, and I can see another card coming in, so our next speaker after that will be Jerry. Ms. Rios.
Good evening, Board meeting and Dr. Hill. I'm here to simply express my concern over these mandates for the children in ages of five to 11. I know the age range for 12 and over has been approved. As a mom of a parent of an autistic child who has been missing over a decade, I am now in fear for my five-year-old within the Burbank Unified School District. I am concerned because of my past experience with my son. All these years, I've had to go through IEPs. I've had to fight with the Burbank Unified School District for his rights. They have taken away some therapies for him. Now that these mandates are going to come into action for kids from five to 11, now my son has told me, "Mom, make them hear you. Please don't let them vaccinate my sister. I'm here on her behalf as well." So, not only do I see a dark future for my son, as I have to surpass a lot of difficulties with him, now I fear for my daughter. I'm here on also behalf of the ignorance of other parents who don't know they're about to face a huge monster that comes with these vaccines. I am pleading for you to consider to please not vaccinate these kids. They don't know what they're up against. These are not long-term studies. I am pleading for you, each and only you, to look into your hearts and your conscience to please think about this twice. I'm here for all the children, and I'm very scared. I'm very scared. And for these mandates and the governor, who I wish shall not mention, to say, either your kid participates in school and has these vaccines, or they won't. That's lacking in social skills. That's lacking in everything. That's taking the rights away. That is not fair. I have fought in IEPs with Unified School members, and I'm exhausted, and I don't think I can go a decade more for my daughter now. It is unfair for us who don't see your views to have to have to go through other options as homeschooling, and to have to put money out of our pockets. I'm here standing flesh and bone as a parent who is exhausted of enough of pharmaceutical abuse. This is all not well. This is a spiritual warfare, and it has to end. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jerry Malady, and at the current time, that is the last card I have, so once again, last call. If anyone wants to speak, please fill out a blue card.
Good evening, President Frittner, members of the school board, and Dr. Hill and staff and people here in the audience at home. My name is Jerry Malady. I'm a teacher at John Burrows High School, and I don't live here in Burbank, but I feel like I do, because I'm here more than I am at home, so, and I grew up here in Burbank and a product of Burbank Schools. I first want to give a couple thank-yous to the school board. One is, I cheer you tonight for doing the land acknowledgement. I was wondering where you were going to do that, and I cheer you for that. I thank you very much for that. I've heard a lot of things go by the last few weeks. I've been here at the meetings, because it's hard to come back here at 7:00. Like, tonight, I stayed at my classroom till 6:30. But I don't know. I think, I'm not sure I was the first one, but I was one of the first ones in this district to get COVID. I got it on March 15th, so two days after we shut down. And first off, I want to, Dr. Hill, I want to tell you that Serene and Lenora were fantastic for me during that time period. I can't, we all were like, didn't know what to do, and, in fact, I didn't know I had it at first. So, when I hear things, I'm very uptight when people like, kind of poo-poo COVID, like it's no big deal. Like, yeah, it's a big deal, okay? And I think I'm still suffering some effects from it. So, I just want to ask the people that think more broadly than just, than just look at, just like every, what, I gotta say themselves, but I want to thank you, school board, for having put up with a lot for the last three months or so, since you went back alive. What I came up here to talk about was the diversity issue on, I think it's 10B. And Dr. Paramo, I might mention your name a couple times, but I'm not mentioning it in any bad sense. It's just that you are part of the process, I guess. We got new textbooks in history. Before I forget, I want to let you know that I do teach five ideals of the Declaration of Independence the first week or second week of school, and I go back to them each week, or a lot of times in my history class. So, there is teachers that do teach that stuff. Just let you, let you know that's happening. Anyway, is that we get these new textbooks, and it feels like of all the textbooks that were out there, I was like the worst one to get, and, in my opinion. And in like, I wrote a, I wrote a letter to you folks in June of 2020, because we were, you were not virtual, or you were virtual, and it was just kind of like, Dr. Frittner, I think you maybe, Dr. Frittner gave you a promotion.
That's my wife, so.
Mr. Frittner said that there was like water under the bridge and all that. Yes, I understand that John would say that, too. But I want you to know that it was probably, what was the rush? And then I wrote a letter to Mr. Ferguson, which I didn't even get a response to, but about, you know, kind of the SB 42 issue. I talked to Dr. Reynolds before she got off the board, and they, and it basically sounded like you guys are not going to make a decision until spring 2021. until spring 2021, and then all of a sudden, November 2020, you adopt the textbook. And then we weren't even in class, and we found out, "Oh, you need to clear your rooms out so you can put the new textbooks in on February." Like, what the heck? You know, that was still, I thought there'd be still more time. And now we're finding out with this direction you folks are wanting to take with diversity, which I'm really for, but this is like the worst book for it. And like, I was trying to do some things this week, and I almost threw the book across the room. The ancillary material is from the previous editions, which don't match to the current edition. You know, yes, I can pull out stuff from other books, which I do, I did. My colleague, Ms. Snowden, is fantastic with this stuff, and she helps a lot. But I just feel like it was a really bad process. And I know that all of us here and myself, we're not gonna, not gonna be around the next time we adopt a textbook. But I just wonder, maybe Dr. Paramo, that using the CD, the, let's see, Downey, yeah, County Education, ALEC, that's it, ALEC, using their their checklist is maybe wasn't the best idea because it didn't address the ideas that we needed to face, especially in terms of, we knew this was coming up, that diversity, and what was the rush? We were all in lockdown. And now we're stuck. And I see you talk about supplement materials, and I got one second. I'm, since I'm the last person, I've been here for a while. Is, is that, you know, that's great, but we could have made some differences before, or like, like, we talked about at least in one of the meetings that maybe develop our own curriculum and all these things that, you know, now it's like, I feel like we're doing a lot of extra work. And so I'm just saying that next time, you know, I know somewhere in the great battles of BUSD that next time they adopt socialized textbooks that would be more transparent, that we would have to talk to like all the books and look through them or whatever the idea is then, and maybe some better checklists than what ALEC does because it doesn't help us and what we're doing. And finally, one last thing, I looked at your presentation for tonight. I guess the question is, is there gonna be protections for us teachers? Because as you can see, that when we start touching these issues, people are gonna be upset. People are gonna come forward. We are gonna be attacked. And I don't mind it, but what is your, what is, what are you folks gonna do for us? And that's my question. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I see no further cards. Last call for anyone who wants to speak. I'm seeing no one move forward, so I will close public comment at this time. And we'll move on to 9B, which is staff responses. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Fritner, and thank you to all the speakers tonight. Really appreciate your comments and feedback this evening. Ms. Little and Ms. Hurst, I love the slogan "Better Together", and I just, I appreciate the partnership we have with PTA in this district. As you mentioned, it's the board, the superintendent, staff, the principals. We truly love that partnership working together, and I look forward to the meeting in February. Ms. Denberg, thank you, and to your colleagues for supporting the Native American Heritage Month and supporting the efforts that we're doing across the district around expanding our curriculum as well as the work we're trying to do at John Burrows High School. So look forward to continuing to work with you all on that. Ms. Foster, as Mr. Ferguson said earlier, we're gonna do a deeper update at a future board meeting about the work that Ms. Tabit's doing with Dr. Paramo. We are looking, we're working with the Burbank Police Department and looking at various programs, not just every fifteen minutes. One, it's, the concern is not, is because it's traumatic or it has a big impact on students. The concern was, how is it ingrained and embedded so that students are taking away lessons learned, not for a small group of students? So we're evaluating the pros and cons of every fifteen minutes, but there's other programs that they want to embed in our health curriculum that may have a deeper and lasting impact. So we're, we are with you of looking at speeding, safe driving, and finding the right program to continue. Ms. Heliger, thank you, and I'm sorry to hear about the incident that happened. I'm gonna ask that Dr. Paramo reach out to you and see if we get more information about the event so that we can follow up and see if there were Burbank students involved. And then broader, as we're doing on the work, definitely, we wanted to talk about students. Any kind of harassment, bullying, intimidation with any student groups is something we're working on, and we'll hear more about that at the DEI group. So we're continuing to do that. Ms. Vincent, a lot of the topics, a lot of the conversation you spoke about really involved, specific for the school site and the teacher. So I'm gonna ask that Dr. Paramo make sure that you're in touch with Dr. Chambers at John Burrows High School so you can have a conversation with the teacher and make sure that gets resolved. And this is in the forum where we talk about personality issues, but I want to make sure that you know Dr. Paramo can assist that if you have any challenges connecting with Dr. Chambers, which I don't think you will at all, and we want to get to that. Ms. Rios and Ms. Vincent, you talked about a student vaccine mandate. I just want to be clear that FDA is still emergency use, and so the state mandate is only when it's full approval. And so currently, there is no student mandate on vaccines. Now, we encourage all families to learn more about the vaccine and as appropriate for your family and your child to get the vaccine. But I just want to be clear, there is no student mandate right now at BUSD. And then, Mr. Malady, I really appreciate you coming down, especially after a long day of teaching, and we always welcome the feedback. So we know the board wants to hear from you, and you know, you email, text us, call us as well, and so we want to keep that dialogue. You raised some good points about looking at the framework and how we're selecting that. And I see Ms. Casao, and I know Dr. Paramo, we're always open to looking at that. There's not a perfect textbook, so we need to look at the process to find the best one that's available and have a process where people's voices are heard. And then we select that, and then we look at the supplemental materials that we can augment that. So valid points, I know there's been a lot of heated and passionate but productive conversation that you've had with the team, so we continue to encourage all teachers to share that with us and continue to look at the process and improve it. And to your point about DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, as we talk about these topics and as we expand our focus in our curriculum, have more diverse views, and people may have concerns or uncomfortable, absolutely, our teachers are gonna be protected. We want to make sure that we are focused on teaching a complete history. We've had this conversation a lot about, it's not to say one lens of history is worse than the other. It's not to say, what is the complete history? And then have a critical thought about what's the history that's been presented to us historically? And can we, can we dispute some of the things that we've learned? Can we discuss it, debate it? But teachers should not be fearful of any kind of retaliation if they're teaching to the fullest extent of the historical context. Thank you, President Fritner.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We'll move on to board members' comments and responses, and we'll start tonight with Dr. Agakonian.
Thank you, President Fritner. I do want to thank all of our speakers. To the parent regarding the straight limit, I'm sorry, I didn't write your name down. I know that our Assembly Member Friedman's got a legislation, AB 43, giving the power to the cities to regulate even with five miles an hour on speeding, which people don't realize what the impact five miles makes when it comes to accidents. And I want to thank you for all your efforts. I've lost family members very young to reckless driving, so. And to Ms. Heliger, I condemn violence, no matter race, ethnicity, doesn't matter. I think part of the reason I co-founded the DEI Committee was to talk about these difficult conversations that we need to have. And I think the DEI Committee is doing a wonderful job, but as I said from the beginning, these conversations are difficult. And I hear all sides. I myself was a victim when I was in high school. Not because I was Armenian, because they thought I was Mexican. I got jumped really bad. So I think as a community, we need to come together and talk about these topics. And the longer we ignore them, the worse it's gonna get. So I appreciate you coming forward and bringing this forward. And I'm very, very confident that we can get a group of individuals, community leaders, and talk about these conversations. So thank you for bringing that up. And then, what else I was gonna talk about? Oh, and I think also, you know, talking about, you know, what's happening right now with our students, with the vaccination. I understand your concerns. You know, we have, our son's gonna turn ten next week. Well, not next week, actually, Sunday, sorry. And, you know, we have, also as parents, we have concerns. But I think the key should be also making sure that our community is well-informed. You know, we're having forums. I think the more we share the information, you know, the better it is when it comes to making a decision that really protects our children. As I said, said it before, I say it again, the safety of our children and staff is our number one priority. So I want to thank all of our speakers for their comments. And I also want to thank PTA. Thank you very much. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful idea what you're doing. I didn't get a mug, but hopefully I will get a mug, you know? But thank you very much for all you're doing. It's always wonderful to see you all, and thank you, Mr. Fritner.
Thank you, Dr. Agakonian, Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg, she, her, hers. A thank you to Superintendent Hill and everybody for putting the land recognition into our printed agendas. Really happy to see it. Think it's another important addition, so I wanted to say, publicly say thank you for that. Also, I wanted to wish anybody who is celebrating Diwali, I don't know if you say happy Diwali or whatever it might be, I hope you have easy, fast, and a joyful observance. Where am I? Okay. Thank you to our amazing student board members. Isaiah, I want to tell you, like, speaking in front of people is always terrifying, no matter what, so never apologize. Like, we all get lost all the time. We all get turned around all the time. So you did a phenomenal job, you always do. And you need to teach me some public speaking skills because you're like a rock star at it. It's amazing. Okay. It is exciting to hear about all of the credits. It's exciting to hear about the clothing drive. I know that both myself and Ms. Tabit wrote that down, so we'll try to get some stuff your way. Thank you, fabulous council PTA. I know I still need to renew my membership. I'm a very broke teacher. I will do it. Don't come for me, I know. Polly, thank you so much. We appreciate so much. And Carmenita, the Commitment of Destiny Education Project. It's always good to have people there to remind you of what's important and to keep you on your toes and focused, so I'm grateful for that, as always. To Ms. Heligar, someday, something good will happen and we'll be able to rejoice together. But I do want to thank you for continuing to show up when these things happen because it's forcing you to sort of relive the moment and re-traumatize yourself. I know how much energy that takes and how much effort it takes, especially when it's easier to just walk away and not engage. So I'm grateful to you for continuing to do that. When I echo Dr. Agakonian's comment, I think Ms. McCoy could be really helpful in helping facilitate these conversations with students to help get to the core of what's going on and how we can sort of bridge any cultural gaps or misunderstandings. So thankful to have somebody here to help us do that work. And I know that Dr. Paramo will follow up as well, and that we as board members will follow up to make sure that we're up to date and informed on everything that's happening. So thank you. Ms. Foster, I will definitely be reaching out to learn more about Together We Can. Appreciative to you. As Dr. Agakonian said, our electeds have been doing some really wonderful work on a state level, and I think we can be doing some stronger work here in Burbank with our city council partners. Ms. Vincent, thank you so much for your comments. November eighth is our health, our health form, is that right? Monday? So I want to encourage anybody to tune in. We have some great experts coming to talk to us about the student vaccine. To be clear, as Dr. Hill said, there's no mandate at this time, but it's always great to be informed and learn more. So I know I'm gonna be attending on Monday to educate myself more than I am. To Mr. Malady, thank you so much for your comments. I know that the textbook adoption was before my time, but as a fellow history teacher, I think we can both agree that history books are never, it doesn't matter where, when, who does them, they're always hugely problematic. I barely touch mine, and the amount of work that goes into finding meaningful supplemental material is really challenging, but I know that that is something that all of us, Ms. Casao, Dr. Paramo, Dr. Hill, everybody in the DEI community, we're really working thoughtfully on how to address supplemental material. Just sat in on the policy subcommittee meeting last night, and there's really amazing work and thought being put into how we can address your concerns because we all know that our textbooks are remiss. Even the best ones are missing things. So it's good to have that reminder. And I also think, you know, one of the things I hope you're hearing from school board meetings is the 100% commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion work unwavering. So beyond knowing that, I do think it would be helpful for us to maybe clarify or reiterate, what are the protections in place for our teachers? If you do have an experience of harassment with a parent, if there is something going on that makes you feel unsafe because you're doing this important work, I know that there's safeguards in place already. It would be helpful for me to know what they are and maybe to reiterate those to the teachers so you also know what's in place for you in case you are feeling unsafe or harassed. So that's, that's something that I would like to learn more about too, so I really appreciate you bringing that up. I think that is all I got, but thank you to everybody for coming tonight. And thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, President Fritner. Thank you, everybody, for coming down tonight and for putting your cards in. To Ms. Little, Ms. Hurst, thank you as always for coming down and for your continued partnership with PTA. It's always a pleasure working with you, but it's always fun to see what kind of new social media efforts are taking place to try and get people connected to parent advocacy. And we've seen really how parent advocacy has started here and really made big changes statewide and even triggered national conversations via PTA. So again, can't reiterate it strongly enough how important that partnership is, and just thank you for that. To Ms. Steinberg, about signage in particular, agree. We need to move as quickly as possible. I have been asking the site principal about, you know, the work. This, it is coming down to a capacity issue in trying to track down, again, where arrowheads appear, where everything, you know, it is a comprehensive review. So appreciate you stepping up as an organization, saying we're ready to help in this way. And I just want to make sure that we are all aligned on what that process looks like because there's nothing worse than spending $2,000, $3,000, you name it, and then only, and then, you know, having to justify to the community why we're taking it down a month later, you know, and putting something up. Appreciate it, but let's keep as a part of the conversation going and tracking on that because I think it will be a good day when we can fully embrace what that mascot looks like and all of that. So again, thank you for your partnership. To Ms. Heligar, thank you for your commentary on what your experience has been. You know, I think generally, whether it's, we're seeing it in student behavior, we're also seeing it in adult behavior, right? The world is more aggressive than it has ever been, and people are more defensive than it has ever been. And as a result, I think, you know, people are not making good decisions, whether they are students, whether they are adults, you name it. And so kind of piggybacking on Dr. Weisberg's comments about, you know, what are the appropriate escalation strategies for teachers as teachers experience issues and pushback? I also think for parents, we need to know what are the escalation strategies for parents and talk about that. Just understanding the kind of nature of the world right now, that we're gonna be running into additional conflict. And instead of people, and Ms. Vincent, I do want to say thank you for coming down, right? I don't, thank you for sharing. I wish you didn't have to share in such detail, right? At this podium, at this lecture, in order to get a response to your concerns. Also, very thrilled that you are doing better personally. So thank, you know, just thank you for sharing tonight. But it's But it's pretty clear, right? We're gonna have areas of disagreement, we're gonna have areas, and, and we still have to get to that core function of educating, right? So I think just allowing everybody to see what are the appropriate paths to escalate when there are issues, I think is more important than ever. And, and thank you for those going through it. Your claims have to do with a specific instance employee, I'm deferring to the superintendent on that to look for, any student, you know, interpretation sometimes is interpretation, that's where it gets tough, but our, our students should feel safe to learn. And, and there are gonna be different views, and as adults, I think we're gonna struggle with that, but again, thank you for working with us and for escalating. To Ms. Foster, related to speeding, thank you for your advocacy and for taking, instead of sitting by, right? Taking and, and getting active. I was, I got involved with the Mayor's Youth Task Force that used to be an organization in Burbank that, that coordinated a lot of Burbank resources around young people in 2002. It was a part of the original group that brought Every 15 Minutes to Burbank. Happy to discuss Every 15 Minutes with you. It is indeed a very impactful program. The challenges we identified in using that program was that we had this kind of profound emotional moment for all these kids, and then there was no successive follow-up work that was ever done. So suddenly, we were getting to spring break, and students were making jokes about Every 15 Minutes. And, and so the scared straight approach sometimes has this really bad adverse reaction without follow-up work. So having and finding some sort of program, we've talked about, I think another program that was similar to that was Challenge Day. Ironically, both of these programs were featured on the Oprah Winfrey Show at the time, so, but you, again, you have these great feel-good moments as a campus, everybody's like, oh, this is so wonderful, and then, spring break happens, right? And then, none of the behaviors or patterns changed. So, you know, I, I've let Ms. Tabit know this just based off of the history of working on this, but I'm really committed to try and work with folks to find a program that we can sustain, that we can reiterate, that becomes kind of a constant measure, you know? It is a very deliberate and intentional act to slow down around our schools. It, it takes conscious effort. I have been very, I'm like, I'm in a school zone, I need to slow down, right? But it takes that kind of awareness and effort and a constant culture change, not just a one feel-good moment. So I, I want to work together on, on trying to find that and, and to empower that, because the message is so critical. But thank you again for your advocacy, and I will be emailing to stay up to date on, on the latest of what's happening, and will always be a resource if I can be helpful. To Mr. Malady, you know, I, I remember you bringing up your concerns at the time, and I responded during public comment, so again, apologizing, not getting back to your email. Your concerns at the time were specifically related to, again, how LGBTQ history had, had been reviewed in the book. And, and so my, basically my view was, is that there's no volume within a history book that I think is gonna do it justice without supplemental material. And I, and, and at the time, we were also in the middle, Dr. Agakanyan and I were working on the ethnic studies program at the time, and we were also not sure as to whether or not we would find cultural education be housed in history or to be housed in ethnic studies, and if so, what components of that were gonna be left out, and so what, we would then have to pick up in the framework on the history side. So it's a very complicated trying to cover all bases, but ultimately, what I found with textbook adoptions is that the depth that we're looking for, the, the, the kind of core lessons that I think you were advocating for, I don't see that traditionally in textbooks. I, I haven't seen that at the depth, and again, it does count unfortunately on that extra effort at times. I wish we could adopt, we can review process, I'm very open to that, because I, it, it should be collaborative, and as you mentioned, they stay forever, these books. But I, I do want to say that I think philosophically, at times, supplemental material and a bigger deep dive with an author that may have greater experience in an issue area can give our students greater access to the content, greater understanding, and ultimately, more decision-making gets changed as a result of that. Just my, just my paradigm on that. So don't disagree with you, just think that supplemental materials are gonna play a greater role in education generally moving forward, that are more tailored and more in-depth. Other than that, I do want to give just quick report outs on events around the district that I've been able to get to. One, I want to thank the staff over at Edison, we were, President Fritner and I were able to stop by, drop off some just bagels, donuts, just to say thank you for a very hard year and a hard work, so it was great seeing kiddos. I understand Mr. Fritner was blowing the whistle during rain day and helping with campus supervision, so very excited to hear more about that. For the record, you were asked back, so that, it went well.
When you live across the street, it's easy to ask.
Yeah, there you go. So if you're having parking issues at Edison, you can park at Mr. Fritner's house. So just a, a thank you there. Also want to thank our Monterey students, the superintendent and I were able to go and join for basketball. So I will disclose, I think there was like 42 points, we did win. The team was myself, a student, the superintendent, and the principal. I will say Superintendent Hill scored about 70% of all baskets, out of like 38, I think I scored three. Most were airballs, there were more airballs than points scored, but again, the students were insanely good and, and kept us busy. So again, thank you for the invite. I will definitely be back when I am back, it depends on when my ego recovers, but ultimately, again, thank you for the invite.
Thank you, Ms. Tabit.
Well, good evening, and thank you to all of our speakers who came out this evening. As I've been saying for several years, I appreciate folks coming out and talking to us about what they're going through or what's happening, and sometimes we're, you know, what you've brought to us is, is something we've never, we haven't heard before, so it's always good to keep us in the loop. I appreciate that. Thank you to our, our PTA leaders, Ms. Little and, and Ms. Hurst. You know, we always appreciate our PTA and the resources they bring to our students and our, and our school sites, and, and now what you've brought to our superintendent and in February, I'm sure I can't wait to hear about that and, and what will take place there, so thank you. Ms. Steinberg, it's, I, I happen to serve on the Facilities Committee. We meet twice a month or every other Monday, depending on how that works out. And our, one of our topics of conversation for the past couple of months, maybe longer, has been the Indian sign out front of John Burrows. And, you know, we've gone, run through the gamut about what we could do about that without spending money that we really don't have. So it's wonderful to hear that the Destiny Education Project is stepping up to help us cover that up until the official mascot comes through. I truly am appreciative of that, so thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, that's just, we, we love the help from our, our, from our groups, our outside groups, and, and the, and not just the committees that you mentioned, because a lot of them are very, except for ASB, are also parent-based, but it's the students that have worked so hard on that committee and on the ASB on a really, really tough, tough topic. I mean, they, they faced alumni who were unhappy, maybe even their own parents at home, but they still, because it was important, kept pushing, and it's great to see the work they've done. It's really, really, really proud. And I didn't, I went to the Burbank Burrows game, and I didn't feel like, it just seemed like a natural next step. We, you know, the Bulldogs were playing the Bears. It just, it wasn't a, wasn't a, wasn't a big deal anymore. I don't mean to trivial, trivial, oh my God, trivialize, 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 thank you. Trivialize it, but, you know, and that's, I think, what we want. We just want it to be a natural next step, so, great job, thank you. Ms. Foster, it's been a, a joy to be a part of your committee. Where are you? Are you still here? Oh, good, thank you. I, I didn't know when I, after the accident, because Sarin was a young person who grew up in an organization that I'm very involved in, so to learn not, you know, of his passing, but of the others also was heartbreaking to me. And having been on the board for two terms now, unfortunately, it wasn't the first accident to happen, and it was amazing and awesome to meet with a group who had similar thoughts and ideas about, we need to do something, we need to stand up, we need to talk about this, we need to bring some new rules, we need to bring the, the, the thought of safe driving, to be respectful of others on the road, the safety of others to the forefront so that our students are talking about it and learning about it. And so, and also thank you to Councilmember Nick Schultz for joining us. Some things that we know for sure are happening, as you know from your committee, but so that the community knows, and Mr. Ferguson, you had asked, Dr. Paramo and I, and Councilmember Schultz, and, did I say Dr. Paramo? Yes, I did. Met with Chief Albanese and the Police Department with the help of Dr. Paramo, and our wonderful health teachers are bringing a program to the health classes. The Police Department, Chief Albanese, really wanted to work with smaller groups in the beginning to get the message and the point across, and the program they're using slips my mind at the moment. Speed? I can't either. Ah, okay. But it's a program that they're going to bring into our health classes, starting as soon as that happens, I'm hoping, I think I heard next semester, second semester. And, and it was great to have our health teachers make room in their very impacted curriculum, so, because it's important, so yay, thank you. And then we're working with a, a couple of outside groups to do some other work and programming within our school communities, and of course, your meetings coming up with the principals, and, you know, obviously let me know how I can help with that. And, and I think our principals are happy to be speaking with you and seeing where they can take this together, so I'm, I'm, we're getting there. And of course, also your work with the PTA. I know there's some things coming up, I, I don't know when, but you're working with the PTA groups to also bring this message to parents, because I've also said to the group that part of my feelings and thoughts are that there needs to be some grassroots, boots-on-the-ground kind of effort at each school site, so that the message gets through to the students and, and travels to their parents, who are either driving the cars, buying the cars, or allowing their kids to drive in whatever manner is necessary. So there needs to be, you know, a little bit of responsibility on everybody's part. So thank you, thank you for the time and effort you've put into this. Oh, my goodness. And please, if I, if I don't mention you, don't think that what you had to say wasn't impactful or I didn't hear you. It's just, you know, there's, there's not always enough time. Carmenita, thank you for bringing to light what happened to you and your husband today. This conversation around racial groups have been going on, whether they get along or not get along, have been, has actually been going on long before our DEI committee got together. So I'm, it's past time that we, you know, put together some real effort so that those things never happen again, or ever, or unfortunately, we know they're probably going to, but the more people that are aware of where to go or what to do when do, things do happen, the better off we'll be. Oh, Mr. Malady, thank you for coming out. I, I miss you when you don't show up at the board meeting, so it's always, it's always fun to see and hear from you. You know, let's see, what year is it? I think our, our last history adoption was 20 years ago? Yeah, 2002, somewhere along there. So a, a lot of history has changed since then, or taken place, or, yeah. Oh, you're right, you're right, because I was a secondary teacher at the time that we adopted it, so, yeah. I think we can do a lot of work towards making that process better, and I know our, our staff will come up with something. I have some thoughts and ideas that I can share with you of things that I went through that maybe will work, or at least, no, that doesn't work, let's go this other way. Anyway. Mr. Ferguson started talking about some of the things that he's been involved with this week. It feels like, I, I don't, you know, we're still being cautious, we're wearing masks, et cetera, but there's been some exciting things happen in the district where we've gotten to gather. And I'm, I'm impressed and proud of our student leaders and our administration who's figured out ways to continue the things kids have done in the past outdoors. And homecoming, both dances at both high schools were held outdoors, it's creative, it's thinking out of the box, and I'm very, I, I love that, you know, change is good sometimes. And I'm very appreciative of those folks who took the time and effort to make those events still continue to happen for kids. Or board members who love to go to performances. I missed Bob, but I heard it was wonderful, but I did go to Night of Magic, and, which is a fundraiser for the Burbank High School Choirs, and they did an amazing, amazing performance outdoors, in the quad, never felt like I was sitting outdoors, they just made it so warm and, and inviting and fun. And it is extremely, and I'm telling you this because I was in performance groups in high school and college, there's a huge difference from performing inside as there is to outside. So it takes a lot of work to perform outside, and our students were, were amazing, and I'm very proud of them. They did a great job. What else did we have? Football was fantastic, congratulations to our Casey Donato and Megan Burkhardt, who got engaged on the sidelines at the Burbank Burrows game. So that's that hometown feel that that's where they felt was the most important spot for them to decide to share the rest of their lives together, so that was really neat. And yes, and congratulations to both of them, that's great. Did you go to school with Casey? Wonderful. Anyway, and there's some things coming up that also are outside. The Burbank High School instrumental music is having a, where did that go? A swing night next Friday night, so you can get out, hear some great jazz, and, you know, kick up your heels a little bit out in the quad at Burbank High. Tickets, I'm sure you can get on the Burbank High website and find that out. Also, there's some playoff games going on, as our student leader said, so exciting things happening for kids to participate in, that they, you know, get to just be those kids. Doesn't matter what their background is, what their political ideology is, what their economic status is, they get to be part of a group and go from beginning to end and create something, and I think that's a vital, important part for kids learning. So, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tabit.
I spoke a lot tonight, I'm sorry about that.
Not at all. Thank you to all our speakers for coming out tonight. As always, we do appreciate hearing your viewpoints. Ms. Little and Ms. Hurst, thank you for coming by. As always, we appreciate greatly the work we do with PTA, and especially in Burbank, I've said it hundreds of times at this point, you know, that I think we have the most active and interactive PTA, council PTA and unit PTAs within First District and probably within California. And we've had, and Ms. Hurst is a representative of how many, we've had several of our council people, PTA people move on to First District, and you've spent quite a lot of time at First District, and I appreciate that volunteer work as well, because it's important to the organization. And I love Better Together, because we are. We're, we're better when we've worked together. We're better when we've worked together and we always enjoy working together. So, thank you. Ms. Stenberg, thank you. First of all, congratulations on the launch to you and Ms. Heliger and Ms. Ostrom of the Destiny Education Project. I think it was a great event and we wish you well. And we thank you for the outreach and the support towards trying to get this, you know, the signage at Burrows covered. As Ms. Tebbit pointed out, it has been a continuing discussion. It's not as easy as you would think trying to just find out a good, sensible, not too expensive solution to covering up something like that. But we think we are about there. And the last discussion seems like we've come up with workable solutions. So, we thank the Destiny Education Project for the support towards that because like everything, there will be a cost factor involved. So it certainly makes it easier to move forward with that. Ms. Heliger, thank you as well for sharing the experience that you and your husband had. Thank you for stepping in when you did. Not everyone will. And that's important. And so, thank you for being an example. I hope they weren't Burbank students, but who knows? If that's the case, we'll try and find out. But we also want to be cognizant of the fact that they very well could be and these things could and unfortunately have happened at times in the past in our district. We need to continue the work we're doing to move forward. I'm glad you were inclusive of the Armenian community. They have been attacked at times too. So, there is a tendency for it to be a defensive position, but we need to be able to bring all, you know, all those viewpoints together and discuss it out. So, thank you for bringing that forward. And we'll look forward to continuing that discussion. Ms. Foster, thank you for the discussion on traffic. The group Together We Can, I've been aware of it. I knew Ms. Tebbit was already working with, you know, with your group. We have done a lot of work within the district and the, and the, traffic has been a constant problem. Ever since I can remember, I live across the street from one of our schools, you know, for 23 years now, and I don't remember once that it hasn't been a problem. We've made strides. We've had a lot of, we've worked in conjunction with the city. Every one of our schools has more four-way stops around pretty much every intersection around the schools. We've got wider marked crosswalks. We've got some schools with the 15 mile an hour zone, some of the cutouts for pulling over, you know, for pickup and drop-off. So, we've made efforts and strides, but clearly there's more to do. The unfortunate accident that happened, you know, several weeks ago proves that point. We need to also look, I mean, it's our nature to look around our schools to try and improve safety there. We need to look beyond that also because this is something that's affecting the entire community. That accident, while it did happen, you know, basically, you know, near one of our schools, wasn't, you know, adjacent to a school, but it's still important. And it's involving young people who weren't students but were recently students. So, we need to find a way to reach that group and try and impress the importance of vehicle safety. So, I'm glad to hear you talking about different options. You know, Mr. Ferguson mentioned, you know, the, every 15 minutes, there were a lot of people on both sides had opinions on whether that was effective or not. And I'm glad to hear, you know, the superintendent said, you know, we're looking at, along with the city, other options because we do need to continue to try and do more for this. So, thank you for your efforts on that part. Ms. Vincent, thank you for, and I think she's had to leave, but I, as the superintendent said, it's, it's mainly dealing with one employee, so it's personnel thing, which we won't get into details for. The one thing I do want to say that she mentioned in her comments was that she was the one advocating for her student, and I absolutely agree with that. As a parent, when my children were going through our schools, and I've said before, I was not always in agreement with the teachers, with principals. You have to be the advocate for your child because maybe, you know, maybe it's a communication factor. Maybe there's something that's being missed. Maybe it is, you know, a child on a 504 or an IEP that there's, there needs to be more discussion on how to handle things. So, I absolutely agree that you should be, every parent should be their child's best advocate because you are, because you will stand up for your child and when, when no one else will, or when everyone else is kind of, you know, may have looked at it one way, you know your child better than anyone else. Mr. Malady, thank you. And again, as my colleague says, it's always great to see you here. And I know it's, it means you're probably staying in your classroom until almost seven o'clock before you come over here. You had, you've been very vocal on the history books through the entire process, and we appreciate that. And there were, there was a lot of debate about which of the text was the better text, and within the departments there was. I will kind of second what I think Mr. Ferguson said, that there probably isn't a perfect text at this point. And by the time we can adopt them, they may already be moving out of date. And so, there will be, you know, need for supplemental materials. Although I agree with you, it shouldn't be nothing but supplemental materials, even though Dr. Weisberg said that's pretty much how she's going. That's a lot of work and that we shouldn't be creating that much more work for our staff. So, I agree, maybe there's more that we can do on the process of adopting. And I'm sure Ms. Casio and Dr. Hill, Dr. Paramo will all work towards that. So maybe we can find, I don't want to say a better way, but, you know, a, but yeah, a better way that we can, you know, get through that process and find what's the best, you know, text for us to use. And I don't, I think, I'm not sure if this was in your comments because I kind of wrote my note down here separately, but I know you're concerned about the feedback from parents. You know, if, especially in, you know, as a social studies teacher, you will touch on topics that are going to be triggers for some people. And you shouldn't have to, you shouldn't have to avoid talking about certain things as long as you are presenting it in a manner that gives everyone an opportunity to discuss, as Dr. Hill said, historically accurate. You should be able to do that without repercussions. I was at one of our school sites last week, and that topic came up quite a bit, that with the site principal, that it's become very tough, that discussions that used to be, as I said, as a parent, when my kids were going, I had plenty of, you know, tough discussions with, you know, over materials, over if I thought the teacher was handling my child properly. I don't think I ever raised my voice. I know I never swore at a teacher or a principal when I was in any of those meetings. And that's becoming kind of the norm, unfortunately. And not just from parents, they're getting it from students in some cases. And it makes the job exponentially tougher. And I, we, you know, we've kind of touched on this a little bit in related context in the last few meetings about, you know, societally, as a group, we need to do better. We need to remember, these are people who are trying to do their jobs and do, and are working incredibly hard at doing their jobs, by the way. We're not always going to see eye to eye, but there are ways we can communicate to try and work through it. And it's important that we remember that and that we try and, I don't want to say find common ground because there's some subjects we're not going to find common ground on, but at least be respectful while we're trying to get there and find better ways to communicate that fact. So, I appreciate what you, you know, are going through. And as a district, I, we will stand behind our teachers, you know, when they have to go through those difficult conversations, you know, and we'll, and we'll continue to do that. Because as I said, you should be able to be the teacher you are and discuss the material that you have without fear of repercussion. So. Let's see, I think I covered all my, and regarding mandates, it was brought up, as Dr. Hill pointed out, we are not under any student mandates at this point. You know, the governor has said when the FDA approves, you know, for the age group, which hasn't even been for the 12 to 15 group yet. So, we aren't close to a mandate, and certainly for the 5 to 11, there has been no discussion of it yet either, at least as far as it's come to us. So, we are not mandating vaccines for any students. Having said that, I certainly would encourage parents to consider it and educate yourselves. And it is available for 5 to 11 now. And I think it's something people should seriously consider. Regarding a few items, as I mentioned, I had a chance over the last couple of weeks especially to be on campuses a little bit more. I didn't know if I could have more respect for our site principals, for our teachers than I already did, but I think I do. It's, you know, it's been a real challenge for, you know, almost two years now, working through this. And they're just, I feel our staff is doing a fantastic job at the, at all of our schools. And really working through some difficult times, but finding a way to do it. As Mr. Ferguson pointed out, I was, I was at Edison, which on just about the worst possible day, because it was the day that it rained a lot and they had a lot going on at the school that morning. And no, I wasn't in charge because I let the people who know what they're doing stay in charge. And I just, tell me where you need me and where you want me, and I will, you know, and I will help, you know, and do what I can. But it's great to help out, you know, and where we can. But it's great being around our students and around our staff and seeing, it's so important that we are back on campus this year. And, you know, the vast majority of our students are back on campus. I think it's, we did what we had to do last year, but this was incredibly important for us to be there. And it shows, the difference shows. Seeing students during the nutrition or lunch congregating again, and, you know, many of them, even outside, are still wearing masks. But they're all doing it relatively safely, but they're, they're being kids again, you know. And also having a chance to be in classrooms. One of them, at Luther, we have a cooking class, Ms. Raleigh leads. And on Thursdays, they will take orders from the staff and cook lunch for staff members who will eat their lunch while the students are out at theirs. And they were making some great food. There was, I can't remember what kind of soup it was. I think it was a chicken, I want to say, not tortilla, maybe a chicken tortilla soup, but it looked great. I didn't have any. I wasn't staying, but they had stations where they're making the sandwiches and salads and the soup. And it was, it all looked fabulous. And the kids were so into it and just doing a fantastic job. So, that was one of the highlights I could see when I was on campus. Ms. Tebbit touched on some of the performances that have been happening in the district. I did get a chance to go to Burrows on Broadway. Again, they set it up in the quad, you know, outdoor performances, and it was fantastic. They did a fantastic job. The students, every year, it's a, it's a great show, but I, when you're seeing them, this is not what they were used to, you know, where the venue they're used to performing in. They're used to being on the stage and everything is set up, and didn't seem to faze them in the least. And I kept thinking, they're, they're dancing, you know, without tripping or falling as they're running across the pavement. And there was the one kid doing flips on the concrete. And I'm like, I had a gymnast in my family. They don't, they have pads down where they're doing those, you know, the tumbling routines. And this kid did fantastic in during that routine. So, but it was incredible seeing them have the joy of performing for the first time in 18 months. So, it wasn't just great for all of us there who could watch it, but great watching the students. They had one number that included the choirs from Luther and Huerta Middle Schools. Fantastic. So, as Ms. Tebbit pointed out, there's still a lot of events, performance events that are coming up. I really encourage you, when they come up, there's.
Several shows coming up.
Yeah, there's the jazz concert. I know there's a, the drama at Burrows has got a show coming up in the few weeks. So, if you get a chance, I highly recommend getting out to it. One other event that we had a chance to go to, Mr. Ferguson was there as well, and the superintendent, at John Muir Middle School, we have had an outdoor classroom for a couple of years that was built thanks to donations from Woodbury University and Cartoon Network. But there was a dedication last week of a lending library in honor of one of our former students. The library is called Evy's Escape, and it was, it's named in honor of Evy Swarzinski, who passed away from leukemia about three years ago. For someone who, her family moved to Burbank from the East Coast just as she was entering eighth grade. So, she wasn't, she was at Muir for one year, and then at Burbank High for really one year and one year plus. She really made an impact. One of the, several of the teachers spoke at the event, and one of them mentioned, it's very common for people to talk about when they were students and the teachers who had the greatest influence on them. It's very rare for teachers to talk about students who had an influence on them, a great influence on them. And she was one of them. You know, I can't remember who said it, but Evy loved to read, was pretty much never seen without a book in her hands. Any time she had spare chance, she was, you know, reading. And also was very outgoing and made a point of connecting with pretty much everyone, but especially other students who may have been, you know, off to their, on their, on their own. on their, on their own. Uh, so, um, it was a great event. It was wonderful to see, um, her parents again. I don't get to see them much anymore. Just a really nice event. And we finished up the ceremony about the time the, uh, the bell rang for nutrition. And it was great to see all these students, most of whom never knew Evy. I don't think any of them did, uh, but couldn't wait to come over to the, the, uh, the new library and, and we're, you know, what, what's, what's this about? And then, and kids were going up and grabbing books out of the library and going to read. So, uh, it's great that there will be, uh, a lasting presence there in her memory. Uh, and I believe that's all my notes. So we will move on to item 10, reports to the board, 10A superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Fritner. Three, three updates this evening. First, just wanted to share that I, I had an opportunity this week to focus on, uh, the collaboration that we have with several other districts across the state. Uh, we, we are in California Education Partners has a collaborative that focuses on, on track for graduation as well as a early, uh, pre-K through third grade math initiative. So both of the, uh, groups that we're in were focused on math. And one of the big takeaways from the group was talking about how school districts, and I was talking to 15 other superintendents of school districts, how we shift from a crisis back to what we do best, which is teaching and learning, or the focus on instruction. And when you're in that crisis mode, you turn into a performance environment where your quick decisions, no mistakes, and you're just execution, execution. And that's what we've been doing in this pandemic. And you get comfortable in that and you focus on the, the operations and focus on that. All the topics we talked about is COVID. And we really took a step back. It's like, how do you shift over to that learning organization where it's continuous improvement? And the model we're doing is around plan, do, study, act. And it was just refreshing, honestly, to step back and focus on instruction again. So we'll come back to the board with more updates, but just wanted to thank the team, uh, the teams. We have two teams working on this and bringing it back to the school sites and scaling this district wide. And the results we're starting to see, uh, with our math work are really inspirational as well. Uh, so we'll come back with board reports. But I just wanted to highlight, that was, it was a great moment for me this week. Second update, just wanted to share that we talked about it earlier, board members talked about it. Monday night, uh, November 8th at 6:00 PM, we're going to have a virtual town hall. I encourage families to submit questions in advance. We have a doctor from LA County Health that's going to be able to answer questions around vaccines, especially the focus for students now that it's authorized from ages five to 11. So it's a great opportunity to learn more, hear more, and get some of your questions answered. And you will see in your email probably tomorrow, uh, we're finalizing two clinics for our students to be able to get the vaccine as well. We want to make it as easy as possible for our students to get vaccinated. And then my third update, uh, just want to share, we've been reading about in the papers for, from everyone from Starbucks and restaurants, that there's supply chain, uh, issues across the world. Uh, that is impacting our schools and I know students are probably sharing that as menu items. Uh, we got an update today just on sporks and trays and it's a challenge out there. So if you're hearing that we're modifying menus or we're short on things, uh, we're in it with everybody else and we're being very creative. So I want to thank our food service team, our, our business office for just constantly being creative and thinking ahead to try to mitigate the changes. But if you do hear there's some changes happening at lunch, uh, that's why. Those are my three updates for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Hill. We'll move on to 10B, uh, report on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Uh, Dr. Hill.
I'd like to, well, we met her at a previous meeting, but I'd like to ask Ms. McCoy to come on up and give an update on our DEI work, our new DEI consultant.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Hill, Ms. Casao, Dr. Pramo. Matt, would you like to help me with the slides or?
If we could get the slides up and they already have.
Oh. Yes. Great. Everyone hear me now? This is great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, so this is our first update as I've been consultant for the last month now. Diversity Equity Inclusion DEI Committee update, November 4th. Next slide, please. So the first slide we have here is for the ERG, the Employee Resource Group. One of the only notes we have here is the ERG facilitators will be meeting 10/28. Updates will be available post-meeting. Uh, Matt, if you want to add anything, Ken.
So we, we had a meeting last week and so for the community, the ERG Employee Resource Group, our members from our classified union, our teachers' union, our management organization, as well as senior leadership. Uh, last week, we had a nice meet and greet with Ms. McCoy, with the head of Burbank Teachers' Association, Ms. Abasta, uh, our CTA representative, Nate Banatelli, as well as the CTA consultant that's been helping the ERG. And we talked about how Ms. McCoy can start to have one-on-one meetings with each member of the ERG, of all members, so we can hear their perspectives about where to go next. And then we're going to continue to work together with the CTA consultant and map out the work ahead. Uh, we've been focusing on having common, common definitions is what we rolled out this summer, the video that we did introducing the ERG. Next phase, we want to create an employee survey and then move into focus groups with employees.
Okay. I wanted to add on just to what Dr. Hill said, the employee surveys are really going to focus on just gauging the perceptions, attitudes, and values of our employees here, what their job satisfaction is as far as equity work here, if they all feel inclusive to how they represent, identify themselves. So just to gauge an understanding of where we are with that and if any initial steps we need to take to ensure that we rectify any discrepancies in how they feel included into a BUSD, we want to make sure we, um, touch on those measures to include that. And this is for our engagement update. Um, the first update is students at the high school are connecting with each other, sharing best practice for DEI work. So we're looking at student groups such as BSU, um, all the other students groups of how they're doing their DEI work, if there's a standardization practice that we can use in order to incorporate and share information sharing that works, uh, best for them as far as how they're incorporating some of their work. The next update, students are starting a book drive that will focus on inclusivity and diversity in the book titles. This came from one of our students, Ever, at, um, John Burrows High School. He's focusing on having a book drive that is inclusive to Black voices and Black titles. So that gives, um, students an opportunity to really see what authors are out there that they can choose from, especially, uh, since the work and the schoolwork they're doing is not going to be focused really on equity and progressive learning. Third update here for the engagement update is discussing creative ways to showcase Native American Heritage Month in the classroom and in the community. So some preliminary conversations we were having, um, it's out to really have a, a ceremony to pay homage to the Native American community. So whether that hosted at the YMCA or some of our cultural events, I've been personally reaching out to the Native American groups, uh, near Los Angeles. It seems like everyone is really booked up since this is their month and so, um, it was under short notice, but I'm still looking at ways on how we can even have classroom celebrations or classroom understanding and inclusivity on Indigenous Heritage Month. I'll discuss more on the resources we're going to give to, um, teachers in our instruction update. Fourth update here is Superintendent Hill and myself, um, are creating a video acknowledgement and accountability dialogue that addresses the history of racism at Burbank, where we are now and where we are headed. This one here was kind of, um, Matt and I's idea here. I think some of the consensus I've been hearing from parents and from teachers, not teachers, parents and students really, is that the trauma they experience, um, from the lack of inclusivity in the curriculum has really traumatized them and how they're hearing the information and how their cultural heritage has been shared. And so in order to rectify that and bring reconciliation, part of that is us taking acknowledgement that this has happened in the community and we're going to take initial steps to ensure that we rectify this and bring restorative justice to this. Um, so the video will be myself and Matt talking about, um, issues of racism at Burbank, some of the Native American history in Burbank, um, what we are doing now and where we're headed with the future of DEI work. Lastly, Matt and I have started exploring the possibility of working with a trauma healing specialist to implement restorative justice, healing with our students, parents, and employees. So this one here is, um, kind of one of my favorite updates. This is with Ebony Williams. She is a consultant that focuses on, um, racial and trauma healing for students and just different community groups. So she has laid out some ideas and proposals. We plan to meet with her on Monday, seeing how she can bring some of the trauma and healing, um, into our groups. This, uh, meeting with students and different community groups who feel they've been traumatized by some of, um, some of the teaching practices or some of the words that have been used during the time discussing historical cultural events. And so this is our way to bring restorative justice to them and say, hey, we hear you, we see you, and we're going to bring some healing to see how we can rectify some of the emotions that have been caused by, on behalf of us. I'll go to the next instruction update. So the first update for instruction is English teachers will be meeting at the end of November to begin the process of selecting novels and creating a pathway from grade 6 through 12. This one here, we're looking at inclusive of Black novels, Black literature, um, and looking at ways how we can correct the myths in some of the, the language that we're using and talking about historical cultural events. Sharon, Ms. Casao, if you want to jump in, feel free.
Thank you. So the English teachers are going to be working on two, um, parallel processes. One is to address the gaps that we have now because we removed some books from our core list and then also how to have ongoing, um, books added to our works. So that's happening. And, um, after all of that initial work is done too, it'll still go to the, um, board, but before that, to the rest of the teachers and to the community, to the DEI committee. So everybody has a chance to weigh in and, um, take a look at the work that we're doing before it comes to the board for approval. And then also with the, um, uh, like the, the other part is looking at, and I, um, I'm hesitating because it's so big, but we are starting to address really what's going on in secondary social science as well. You know, so Mr. Mulady, to your point, um, yes, there are significant issues with our social science textbooks, especially in secondary. And so we have done a lot of work already in elementary to look at, um, the voices that are not heard and what resources we need to bring in. And they've created a nice outline and map to get that work done at the elementary level. And, um, that just needs to be really, um, it's like starting from scratch at secondary, though. And so as you know, Mr. Mulady, there's a lot of work to be done there, but we're all on board and we're all committed and that is part of our next phase. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Ms. Casao. Lastly here for the instruction update, we have, uh, we are working with myself to design and implement new educational resources to understand and showcase the history of Native Americans and Thanksgiving. So this one here, Sharon and I have been working on since, um, last week and more so this Monday. I presented some resources from the Center for Racial Justice that provides, uh, some literary materials that discusses the Native American history. So I know before we've been talking about pilgrims and Indians and how this was a kumbaya ceremonial event, and we know that this, that wasn't the correct history. So here this talks about the genocide and the colonization of Native American lands and how really the American people, um, came about in bringing in their own culture and heritage into America. And so I think at different levels of grade levels, we're looking to be more rudimentary and more culturally sensitive. And as the grade levels progress, we make sure that we are being very blunt, but in the same way, being sensitive about the information that's being presented. Um, I wanted to also address, um, I'm not sure what your name is, but I think that your statement that you had earlier was, had a really profound impact. I think as we're moving towards this DEI work, it's, it's imperative that the teachers themselves feel protected. And I think part of that protection is giving them resources that they can really use. I think some of the conversations we're having is the trainer of trainers, how can we train our teachers with our new resources, our new curriculum that we plan to update in some way, that they have the resources they need in order to present information. I think if they're having hard textbooks without the supplementary materials, it does a disservice to how much they can teach. I think if we give them some kind of rubric and culturally sensitive training on how to teach some of these issues, that we can really bring justice to the teachers and to the students who are learning. Let's go move on to the policy update and, um, Dr. Pramaro, jump in as you wish. The committee is adding school board language about supplementing materials into existing policy. Our next meeting will review the policy with additional language and work through the process of editing and revising. Members of the committee are researching open access policies adopted by our districts. We will review these at our next meeting and start to create language for Burbank Unified School District. Assistant Superintendent Pramaro shared the district advanced placement data by race and ethnicity. The committee will review the data that, to help create the language for an open access policy. I think it's clear cut, but if, Dr. Pramaro or, uh, Dr. Hill?
Uh, that pretty much summarizes the beginning work, but our, the key thing on our open access policies, we haven't had open access policies. We've had open access, uh, practices and so we want to get it, we have them embedded in policy.
Happy to take comments and questions, concerns, ideas, thoughts?
No concerns. Quick question, just a clarification point. So when we're talking about, um, introducing new literature, both to supplement, but also to move into some of the novels that we removed, are we focused on Black literature or are we focused on BIPOC literature?
That's a great question. I think if we think of BIPOC, go ahead, Sharon.
I just, I don't know the answer to the question.
The answer is BIPOC.
Okay. Point of clarification. Thank you. And thank you for the report.
Yes.
Let's first.
Thank you. Uh, well, welcome to your first month. Uh, so, uh, you know, it's always great to be like, welcome to the district, please do a report for the Board of Education. Um, you know, so, uh, great work and just thank you and welcome. Uh, I, you know, a lot of this work is really all over the place, right? It, it hits so many different wheelhouses. Um, and to me, I really, because there is so much focus on this, I want to make sure that we are driving towards outcomes, uh, that we can widely say we're working towards, et cetera. So in future reports, if we could get, what by the end of the year is our goal to accomplish? That, that would be just helpful for, because some of it's policy work and some of that may take longer, some of it's HR work, that, that, you know, I get all of that. My concern is, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, is that we are now headed into budget season again. Um, and so, you know, these considerations as we head into December, January, need to be made for possibly future appropriations and future, uh, budget allocation. So I want to be as mindful and to structure our resources in a way to fund this work because it is so critical, but I need a roadmap, uh, and, and what we're trying to accomplish this year and next year, so we can start getting those funds lined up, at least with policymakers, along with the staff, so we're all moving together. But thank you for the work. Uh, I'm excited to see where everything is going and where it will all land, uh, but I want to make sure that there's resources in place to keep doing the work. So, thank you.
Yeah. Great comment.
I have a question. Can you kind of expand for me, uh, in us, open access policies and how that affects our students, especially, I'm, I'm assuming at the secondary level, most, most especially?
So for the last five or six years, we've had a practice in place in Burbank for our students who want to challenge, uh, honors or AP course. And what our practice is, is that if you have an A or B in a previous course, so for example, you have, uh, As and Bs in English 8, then you can automatically go in, choose to go into English 9 honors and so on. Um, if you have a C, you can still get into the honors or AP course, but what we want to make sure is that the students have a meeting with their counselor to understand what the rigor of the course is, what they should expect, not to discourage them. It's to just mindset them, give them a context, let them understand what they're committing to. If you have a D or an F, what we feel is that you're, you're not ready and we don't want to set you up to fail a class. And so if you have a D or an F, then you cannot get into an honors or an AP class. So that has been our practice, but it's not something that's written down. So it's really important as we move into the future that this gets codified in a board policy and that's what we're working towards. Our committee is looking at several different models, some of which include allowing students with their D and F to get into an honors or AP English 9 honors, and so on. If you have a C, you can still get into the honors or AP course, but what we want to make sure is that the students have a meeting with their counselor to understand what the rigor of the course is, what they should expect, not to discourage them. It's to just mindset them, give them a context, let them understand what they're committing to. If you have a D or an F, what we feel is that you're, you're not ready, and we don't want to set you up to fail a class. And so if you have a D or an F, then you cannot get into an honors or an AP class. So that has been our practice, but it's not something that's written down. So it's really important as we move into the future that this gets codified in a board policy, and that's what we're working towards. Our committee is looking at several different models, some of which include allowing students with their D and F to get into an honors or AP course with some caveats in place. We just started that conversation last night. It was our first one, and there was a lot to process, but it's, it's on, it's on the table, and we're talking about that, and, and we're trying to work through that to do what's best for our kids. Did I answer that? Did I answer that question, Ms. Tabit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you did. Well.
All right, we got three who want, so Dr. Arkanian hasn't had a shot yet, so I'll go first.
Thank you. And thank you for your report. I also want us to start really talking about immigrant communities and what the challenges are, especially when it comes even to history. And I think, you know, I will use my community as an example. The whole thing has been so wrapped up just about the genocide issue, and I think it goes even more in depth. Just the fact that we have three different outlines, just the fact that you can find Armenians everywhere, just the fact that if you ask an Armenian, one will tell you our origins are Middle Eastern, one will tell Asian, one will say European, because this is a country that went all the way from Asia to Europe. And I think those things are topics that we need to talk about, but also at the same time, we need to talk about the fact that, you know, when we talk about protection. I receive calls, you know, people whispering on the phone, telling me what their concerns are, including facts that, you know, teachers asking students to write about certain characters that historically are the predecessor of the Armenian genocide, yet in the curriculum, they're considered as part of the 120 leaders, you know? Exactly. And I shouldn't go to a birthday party on Sunday and hear it from a teacher telling me, you know, heard about this? I know we addressed the concerns, but then came the First Amendment question. How dare you tell us not to write about this? This is our choice. Why would you bring that individual forward, knowing how sensitive it is? And I will tell you this, and I've said this before, it is very difficult for some of our students, I being one of them, when I came here, I was almost 18, coming to a country, you don't know anything about the custom, you don't speak the language, yet you have this commitment to your culture and your past, and you at one point become, you know, a powder. All you need is one little button to be pushed, and that individual will go off. And it's difficult, and for our students, it's causing a lot of issues. Simple things as just your last name alone, and why is my last name difficult? Why can't I change it? And I think the focus has to be also shifted toward, you know, the immigrant families coming here, facing these challenges, and not having, you know, even staff coming and whispering, I've been teaching here for so many years, I'm just telling you because I'm afraid I can't come to the podium. And cultural differences as well. Addressing certain things just in open is not sometimes part of some of our culture. We come from countries that we don't believe in government because the government was so corrupt. You come from a former Soviet country, you think you're going to trust the government? So I think those are the little things we need to address, little things that, that does make a difference, but there are no studies about it. And I think the more we, we talk about this, more we bring this forward and just get certain communities out of just bigger issues, like they've talked about, the genocide being one of them, and I'm speaking again on my, my, about my community, yeah, the resolution passed, right? Yet our people are still being slaughtered as we speak by the same, you know, individuals. And, and, you know, you talk about redistricting, you know, that's becoming an issue as well. And it's becoming politicized because maybe certain communities are trying to be broken up. But at the same time, talking about the next generation, who for them, the issues are very similar, but also it makes them in a very awkward position when we bring certain communities out in so often saying, well, I think, and I think. Look, in 1999, when the big fight happened at Grant High School, I went in as a young person to help. The whole thing was about Latinos versus Armenians. It was actually two girls, an Armenian and a Latina, fighting over the boyfriend. The media made it into this cultural war, front page news. 200 people came out brought. When we got to the bottom of it, it was about a hole. And I think we need to understand that certain individuals feel comfortable around their surroundings. So if I'm sitting at a certain area at Burbank High School, hanging around with my people, right, that's, I'm comfortable with that. But how do you break that up when you, you make it more as all inclusive? And I had personal experience myself during a silent protest, when a certain student grabbed a flag and started running around the crowd chanting. And I think those things concern our students. It does leave them also, you know, psychological scars, and brings it back to them, and it makes it difficult. So I think what we're trying to achieve here also, we need to look at even at the smaller parts of it, as little as, why is it for a parent, so, why is it, so why did they come to me, but it's so difficult for them to come in front of a podium and talk about their concerns and issues? How do we empower them where they can? And it's a big challenge. It's a challenging gland there with, with such a high Armenian population, because it is difficult to have these individuals come forward. And it's not just about the cultural differences, it's a long history that we need to address at the same time.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, there are community organizations, and I know we've done a great job, but I think once we also bring this around, but also celebrate the differences and also celebrate the culture itself. We're talking about a rich culture, heavy literature, and a lot of, you know, past, you know, something is even a simp, someone asked me, do you guys know what classical music is? I mean, I was laughing, I said, have you ever listened to the operas written by some of our individuals? And I think we bring that whole perspective forward and educate people about the differences, I think it will also help us. Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson? Thank you. You know, I want to acknowledge that, but I, you know, first of all, she has been here a month. So that's, again, step one. But I, I, I think you make a good point, right? Because I'm, I'm sitting here as a member of the queer community going, what about me? What about me? Right? And this work cannot necessarily, as the people who are responsible for moving this work forward, be about taking inventory all the time of, am I seen, am I seen, am I seen? This is about building the institutional machines, mechanisms and processes so that all of our communities can be seen within our systems. And whether it's the communities of today, or the communities that, you know, are 20, 30 years down the road, that demographically will look vastly different than today. So I, I want to do that, but I want to be mindful of not, you know, always looking for ourself in this moment, but instead trying to build the best institutional mechanisms to ensure that we are not perpetuating systems of supremacy and, and moving forward. So I want to support that work, and, and that discovery process as we go through, I don't think that's fully understood, the scope of that yet. And so as we build that out, I want to create capacity for that. I did want to mention specifically on open access, this is a very, you know, I, I will say, I was personally impacted by this as a student. And, you too.
Same.
And, and I wasn't, I wasn't traditionally motivated by school. And I, I, I wish there were alternative structures, it's a part of why I do the work that I do, to try and provide alternative structures, because I think education so matters, right? But it's how you connect with it that, that counts. And I was denied an opportunity to take a class I know that I was passionate about, and, and arguably one of those anchor courses, right, that would have kept me focused in the other classes, right? I would have had to drop the class if I dropped below a 2.5 or whatever, right? And, and, and again, this is just a crazy time. I disengaged at that point. And I know a lot of students who share that story and who frankly dealt with it a lot worse than I did. And there are also so many moments when it's so dependent on a personal relationship you have with that instructor. And, and so, yeah, at times, unconscious bias really plays a role in this, and, and that's not acceptable. So I do believe that there should be a policy that comes back that is a strong policy that protects this access. I do believe in preserving, I think with appropriate steps, access for students with Ds and Fs, especially if it's an interest area for them, that's keeping them connected to education. I, I think we need to just be wise and flexible in that way, but really excited to see that policy brought back, and would like to see if we can get it in place before next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for your words. I definitely agree. I think some of the preliminary conversations we were having yesterday is that, okay, if there's students who are having Ds and Fs, that part of the, the policy is that if you're having a C, you can talk to your counselor and see how that conversation works, and then you go and proceed to the AP classes if, if that how the conversation ends. Same with the Ds and F students, even for myself, as a child here in Burbank Unified School District, I wasn't challenged intellectually a lot in these classes, and I withdrew mentally. And so I didn't show up the way I should have showed up in classes because I wasn't intellectually challenged. Now, when I got to advanced courses, I was able to show my true colors. I was able to show that, you know, the teacher who I was working with engaged with me differently. The, the learning materials were a bit more challenging, and I excelled. So it wasn't that I was any kind of deficiency, or I had a learning disability, I just learned differently. So when we think about a DEI work, we think about inclusivity. With inclusivity, we have to have, give everyone access to it, regardless if we feel they qualify or not, they have to have access to it, and the teachers must have the conversations to everyone and be, you know, given the access to everyone and say, hey, these classes are available, let's see how we can work it out. But I appreciate the comments.
Dr. Weisberg?
I just wanted to briefly add something that I thought was really powerful at the policy subcommittee meeting, twofold. One, Ms. McCoy spoke about the idea of making sure that our teachers are really kept up to date and involved when it, when we make the changes to open access, one and if, so that it's not like, surprise, things are different, but that they feel bought in and part of the process, which I was really appreciative that you did. And additionally, one of the things that we also discussed was making sure that our parents and students are really well informed about the options that are available to them in regards to these AP courses. So what are my options? Can I go see my counselor if I have a C? If I have a counselor who says no, is that the final word? What can I do next? So I was, I, I think it's nice to see this sort of holistic approach of like, the policy is one step, but the integration and implementation are other really important steps. So I was really, it was really inspiring to hear that last night and really motivating, and I think it's going to help make, whatever changes come forward, everyone's going to feel, hopefully, ideally, you know, no one's going to, not everyone's going to love them, but they're going to understand why the changes are there. And I think examining open access is part of real, authentic DEI work. So I just wanted to thank you for, for that focus during last night's subcommittee.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. I agree.
Dr. Arkanian?
Thank you. I also hope that, you know, the areas that I was talking about, they themselves are so gray because they're so new. And this was a challenge also with the state when it came to cultural studies, ethnic studies.
Yeah.
But, you know, Burbank is changing now, right? You have communities from API coming in now, it's going through the changes as well, and same challenges. So I hope that what we're doing also within that, maybe we can really start also doing some studies about this sudden differences that you can't, there's no books about it, right? I mean, if someone's doing their dissertation, maybe this is a great idea for them, because we're also dealing with, for example, a large amount moving in the Korean, right? Same thing, been through war, new countries, traditional, right? Lot of history. But also, I hope that what we're doing also will encourage a new generation to not only not forget their past, but at the same time, create this mosaic of the community we try and establish. So I think we have a lot of work to do, but at the same time, you know, some of the challenges are very difficult, within our own communities also.
Yep.
And how do we address that? And how do we empower certain community members to come forward and speak?
Yep.
And I think that's part of also something that I hope we can accomplish.
Yeah. Thank you. I take your comments, why? I think, I hear what you're saying as far as DEI doesn't just include black voices. I think, when I think of DEI work as far as we first started, one of the first immediate orders of business is some of the pressing things that are happening right now. And so we're focusing on racism that's happening here, we're focusing on black issues that are happening here. But DEI is so inclusive to LGBTQ, to human rights, to immigration, to sexual harassment, to disabilities. So as we continue to do the work, we're going to continue to press on and touch on all the issues that focus under the DEI umbrella.
I really appreciate the work, but it's going to be challenging, but, you know, I think we're up to the challenge.
Thank you.
Did you have a comment?
No. Yes.
Go ahead.
I don't know, I was just starting to, hearing some of the things that Dr. Arkanian was saying. Change is always difficult for folks. And then you're, you're, and I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying that this is, it's good, but it's a big uphill battle. You're going to have to combat the, the weavers, which means we've always done it this way, why are we changing now? You're going to have to combat those who have some crazy, my, my opinion, interpretation that their classes will, will suffer because they won't be teaching to what they, their idea of, you know, the, the top, they'll think that the students and, I mean, I mean, the list goes on and on and on, and somehow you are going to have to figure out a way to get the message through and overcome this. It's a daunting, really rough task, and whatever we can do to help support that, I'm in. It's, it's, it's going to be, I, I hope we document it well, because it's going to be a fascinating watch. And I know the outcome will be the right outcome, but the pathway to get there is going to be an interesting journey, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think my own personal experience with DEI work beyond BUSD, it's, it's a high emotional capacity job. It's emotional labor, and I think it takes a person who takes it personal to do it, and I take it extremely personal. I've, everything I'm speaking about and implementing and working with leadership team on is something I've experienced. And so for me, it's almost like a no child left behind. There should be no child who has to experience racism, no child has to experience sexism, no child has to experience any form of discrimination. And if I, myself, I know you say you, which is me, however, I see a whole team of people here who are well capable and have, helping me along the way, and I see a whole community, including the Destiny Education Project, who has been assisting me along my journey. So I know the task can look daunting, but I see the uphill battle as a challenge that we're going to work together, and we're going to climb together, and we're going to get to a resolution and reconciliation that's going to really help everyone out. And I really believe that, but I, I appreciate the sentiment, and I, I thank you for sharing that, because it is emotional, emotionally tough, but good thing for meditation and yoga.
And I, I think of, everyone's got their comments, and I just, thank you for your report, for the very detailed report. As Mr. Ferguson said, we will in the future want to have like goals, you know, where we want to wind up, because it can, it's a very difficult, very dense, you know, subject, you know, thing to, to get through. And it can sometimes seem like nothing's happening, you know, no progress being made. So this really helps, because you, you are very detailed on, you know, on, on all the areas that we're working on. Also, I appreciate you talking about the, you know, dealing with what's happening right now, not just, you know, the overall, you know, big picture item, but, you know, knowing that certain things are happening with certain groups right now that, that need more direct attention. So I appreciate that. But I, I, I do really appreciate the report. I thought there was a lot of detailed information on, you know, where we're starting and what, and what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to the board, and Dr. Hill and Ms. Ferguson, leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. We'll move to 10C, the report on facilities and technology projects. Ms. Cutka.
Good evening, President Frittner, board members, staff and community. I'm here tonight, we have one item on the consent agenda that's facilities and technology related and paid for with bonds, if we can get the PowerPoint. So the one item is just an amendment of the approval of the additive change order, number two, facilities, that was on the October 7th agenda, just correcting the amount not to exceed to 305,787. That was for H&amp;S Electric on a scope change for some undiscovered, under, lines underneath power, low voltage and data lines. So any questions? Awesome.
Questions? Great. Thank you. Move on to new and unfinished business. Item 11A, the approval of proposed revision of selected board policies and administrative regulations.
President Frittner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the board approved selected board policies and administrative regulations from the California School Boards Association gamut tool, as presented. Governance and management using technology before I get in trouble.
Second. Moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Arkanian. Dr. Hill, can you give us the lowdown?
As usual, this is an update from the California School Boards Association. This pack update is based on recent legislation or other minor updates.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion?
I had a quick question.
Yes.
Sorry. I was reading through it, and I wondered how, I think this, this one, yeah, it is. So I was reading the changes.
Um, so I was reading the changes in RED. Does that differ the, the policy we have in place for how we help students? The laundry list of like foster youth, homeless, et cetera. Is that different than other districts?
No, on this one, the California School Boards Association, it's a statewide policy template.
Okay, so you just add in your own thing. Got it.
The red, the red highlights are the, it's good for the community. The red highlights are recommended changes that they have made that we have accepted.
Thank you.
And some, some of those policy components are legally mandated. Some of those are, are optional. So that's, that's where Ms. Clark and others through the process really goes through and says, and discerns between those.
I think I got like two more months to ask dumb questions and I'm asking them all.
No, that's a great question. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
We've been doing it for years already and no one's stopping us. So. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. 11B, the approval of California Department of Education Career Technical Education Student Organization, CTSO agreement, CN 210231.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education approved the California Department of Education Career Technical Education Student Organization Agreement, number CN 210231, effective November 5th, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Ms. Casao, can you give us some information?
Thank you, President Fritner. Yes, this is a contract with the state, with CDE, to develop the Career Technical Education Student Organization in the area of arts, media and entertainment, which for us is digital media. And they came to us because we have such a strong recognized program in digital media. And so we, right now, because student organizations are required elements for career technical education programs in schools. And right now, we have a very robust skills program, which we will maintain and continue. However, they would like to develop one specifically for digital media, for arts, media and entertainment. And they came to us to help them develop that. So that's what this is for. Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 11C, the approval of California Department of Education Arts, Media and Entertainment. Amy, oh, that's the one we just read.
Well, no, no.
Oh, right item. I moved up one here and I didn't move on here. Sorry.
It's just the second.
Let's start this again. 11C, approval of California Department of Education, CDE, Arts, Media and Entertainment Leadership Institute Contract, CN 210183.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education approved the California Department of Education Arts, Media and Entertainment Leadership Institute Contract, effective November 5th, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, as presented.
Okay. Been moved by Mr. Ferguson and seconded by Dr. Arkanian. Ms. Casao, once again.
Yes. So again, this is another contract with CDE. And again, it's for arts, media and entertainment. And they want us to manage the annual institute that they put on in arts, media and entertainment. That's statewide for all the school districts and their programs to attend. And so we're happy to do that.
Wow. Great.
That's where my congratulations came from. That's a big one.
In the middle of a pandemic. So just, you know.
Uh, any further discussion besides congratulations and great job? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 11D, the acceptance of gifts.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move that the Board of Education take formal action, accepting the following gifts to the district and that the Board President respectfully convey appreciation to the donors as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Arkanian. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those, yes.
Can I just say one thing? Dr. Paramo, A, I feel like when he reads A, that we've accomplished a goal that's been a, a difficult journey over the last four or five years. So I'm really proud and happy to see that one.
In the gift report.
In the gift report. Yes. Let me be clear. In the gift report, A. I, I know he was shaking his head. He knew what I meant. Because it was a, it was quite the journey.
Otherwise, it was a very passionate speech about the approval of minutes.
Yeah, are we a gift? Sorry.
Yes, we are. Nope, we're the right place. So any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. The board accepts the following gifts. Item A, BHS Baseball Boosters Club wishes to donate to the district $7,500 to be used for coaching stipends for October through December 2021 at Burbank High School. Minim Productions Incorporated, Snowfall Season Five wishes to donate to the district $3,000 to be used as needed at John Muir Middle School. Thomas Edison Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $5,000 to be used for the art wheel materials and supplies at Thomas Edison Elementary School. The Blackbowed Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $384.62 to be used as needed for McKinley Elementary School. Vimalan Mahadevan and Belinda Sunu, and I hope I got the names correct, wishes to donate to the district $500 to be used by the Counseling Department and Ms. Barzagar as needed at Burbank High School. Casey Scott Valvo wishes to donate to the district $30 to be used by Room 21 at Bret Hart Elementary School. Bret Hart Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $900 to be used to purchase 80 mice for Bret Hart Elementary School. Hopefully they're these kind of mice or, I don't know. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $600 to be used for the Ballet Folklorio Dance Assembly at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $22,995 to be used for Education Through Music LA, for general music instruction for third grade students and band orchestra lessons for fourth and fifth grader students at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $3,000 to be used for yoga and mindfulness instruction for TK through fifth grade students at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. The Thomas Edison Elementary Fundraiser Committee, cool, I used to remember what those stood for and I can't remember anymore, wishes to donate to the district $19,907.2 to be used to pay for Booster-Thon at Thomas Edison Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $2,000 to pay for fall mindfulness instruction by Heather Beltran at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $3,055 to pay for fall short-term PE coach Christie Chase at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $4,760 to pay for full-year curriculum assistant Amy McGuire at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $13,650 to pay for STEAM lab instruction and videos. Our Bliss LLC, Joe Reed at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $5,610 to pay for percussion lessons by Andrew Grushow at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $2,359.94 to pay for Kidchella expenses at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $815.83 to pay for office paper shredders at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $11,820 to pay for choir vocal music assistance, Amy McGuire and Erin McGuire at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $4,326.18 to pay for spirit wear at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. And Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $4,080 to pay for STEAM lab classes by Dr. Dorothy Nguyen Graff at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. We thank all our donors for all gifts, large and small. They are greatly appreciated always. Uh, we will move on. Yes, it was. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
President Fritner.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move, uh, the consent calendar items 12A through 12O, except for items which Board members wish to pull.
It's been moved by Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Arkanian. Items 12A through 12O. Are there any items anyone sees need to pull? Seeing none. Any discussion? Also seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Flip the cards. We have, before we move on, one, two, three, four, five retirements to announce tonight. First of all, Gore Bhagchalian at the Adult School, who began service to the district in 2004. Next, Les Bukowski, and Ms. Clark, you gave me the phonetic one and I, I have the wrong one. So I think I pronounced it correctly. Is a glazer carpenter in facilities, began service with the district in 1997. Mary Kelly was an instructional assistant at the Children's Center. Began service in November of 2001. Gloria Alara, an instructional assistant, special education, began working for the district in 1989. Wow, good for you. And finally, Cindy Simons, a discreet trial facilitator and special ed, began service to the district in 1998. We wish you all the best in your retirements and, and goodwill. We'll move on to item 13, request to address the board. And I see no one left in our audience. So I will presume there is no one to address the board. Mr. Ferguson.
Can I, I just ask for a, a special item, just, uh, next meeting, if we could do an adjournment in member, in memory of John Leosis. For those, John is the patriarch of the Coral Cafe family, which has so long been such a community supporter and small business that has supported so many high schools, so many schools and so many students. And so that family has lost their patriarch and who, who was always such a fixture there and was so warm and welcoming and inviting. So if we could bring an adjournment motion next meeting, just to, again, honor that family who's done a lot in this community. So.
I agree. And they have been very supportive of both individually and, you know, our students and, and our volunteer organizations as well as some of our schools. So I think that's a very good idea.
And a great place to go after a football game, right? So.
And after, and after a concert and after pretty much anything because they're open all night. So.
I was going to say, it's pretty much the only place open.
Yeah. Uh, any other comments for my fellow board members? If not, I will wish everyone a Happy Diwali. I think that's the first time we've mentioned we, I've ever received a Happy Diwali card. So Happy Diwali to all those who celebrate it. And we'll adjourn at 9:43 PM.